We'll go ahead and call the board retreat to order at ten oh eight, twenty eight.
All right, so the board retreat has been called to order. We're going to start today. Willie was going over the logistics for, going over the logistics for your GSBA. You just, you should have a folder. On the left side of your folder, you have the agenda for the whole conference. You change it with different colors. It includes the times, the locations, also our dinner reservations. When we leave here today, I'll go ahead and send you invites for the dinner. We have reservations for all three days. Next on behind the agenda, you'll have the conference agenda. So it'll have all the sessions for each day. And then behind there, you will have your, how many training hours you have. So everyone should be good with their hours after next. So, but just to give you an update or show how many, and it has all the hours of training that you've taken. Any questions so far?
How many are you supposed to have every year?
Keep like there.
Nine.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Fifteen.
Fifteen for the board.
There's three orientation hours. They aren't in there yet, but we're gonna get that taken care of today.
And those were the ones in February?
Yeah.
Uh-huh, okay.
Your local orientation.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you have, when you went down to Fifth and Terry.
Yep.
But then also you had local orientation. What you did with.
Yep.
And also five and Terry.
Thank you.
Dr. Solton, you have your delegate package in there that you need to take with you when you go to the delegate meeting. It's also on the left side. It's on the very side.
Okay. So you have a little more.
So, yeah, that's it right there. And then on your right side, you will have the conference registration. That's just make sure there's no issues when you're registered. Your hotel registration, your tax forms, for DM, right? You don't have to worry about the hotel. I've already sent a check in. You don't have to worry about the tax exempt. I sent them the tax exempt, but I still wanted you guys to have it in your bonus business case. Um, there's an envelope in there for you to put your receipts in. Your reimbursable expenses should be things such as airline ticket, mileage, airport parking, hotel parking, ground transportation, and meals that are not covered. So all of our dinners are covered. And according to the agenda, breakfast and lunch are covered. So you're two travel days. You'll get for DM on your travel day.
So at the bottom of this sheet? The reimbursable. Right, that list that she just said.
That's on the front of the right side.
And how do you want us to send you airfare?
Okay, you can send it to me via email.
Email, alright.
So if you get a physical receipt, you can put it in the envelope that's in your folder and you can give it to me. Or if you wanna scan it to me, you can. Either way, it's fine. Um, I just ask you to reimburseable expenses within fourteen days so that I can go ahead and get the expense report done. And I'm gonna send it back to you via DocHub. That way you can sign it and get it back to me if you take it sooner than later.
And the fourteen days are still key because, you know, this is the end of this fiscal year. And so if you go beyond fourteen days, you're almost going into F-line.
I've already entered the purchase. We already have purchase orders for everyone. So once you give it to me, we could turn it in immediately and get your expense check that Friday. Any other questions?
So I wanna introduce to you, uh, Ms. Bowie. One more thing. Don't forget to bring your CSD, um, and board shirts. Dr. Solton is gonna put you in charge of.
Outfits.
The outfits. So I, she, she will organize which shirt to wear each day.
You don't have a background about it.
Photos of.
Yes. So, yes, Dr. Solton is going to tell us what we are to wear each day.
Okay.
What could be pre-dressed days or.
There's no pre-dressed days.
Oh, there are no pre-dressed days. Okay, very well. Dr. Solton, go ahead. I wanted to introduce to you, Ms. Bowie. Uh, some of you have actually seen her probably with GSBA, your former training. Uh, I know, uh, Ms. Bowie really worked a lot with the Parliament Terry, uh, seen all of that training. But besides that, she's been working for GSBA and now we're in a contract with ACTIV. Typically, we have Ms. Julia Bernat here, but she had a conflict today. Uh, so we did.
She just stuck with me.
But she's gonna just speak to you a moment about, obviously, uh, GSBA and the importance of conference attendance.
Yes. Um, I'm, I'm excited for you. All the information that you got this morning. There are horror stories from school boards getting to the conference, being reimbursed, et cetera. But, uh, the staff here has really given you everything that you need. And so I'm, I'm, I'm excited about that. I think the other thing that's good is that all of you are planning to go along with the superintendent. And that is, that's really a good thing. Typically, when you go to a meeting, two of you will go and you each get something a little bit different from the workshop. But now you have the opportunity for all of you to be there together and to come back in to share because you will have different perspectives. Of the Georgia School Boards Association Conference is also good regardless of the outfits that you're wearing. It is my hope that you will interact with other board members. And the thing you always find is that regardless of where they come from, especially if you end up at some point going to some national conference. People can be from Hawaii or Alaska, but school boards have the same issues wherever they are. It may be that they have a few more students or some fewer number of students, but it's the same thing. So your interaction in between workshops is so important. I think the other thing that is good for you is that school board members typically see each other at the meetings. And it is, uh, it will help for your collaboration that you have some meals together, that you can talk about something outside of the school board and interact in that way. Because getting to know each other, you don't have to live together, but you do have to work together. And it's so much easier if you had that, that exchange and interchange. I did take, um, look at a couple of your board meetings and I am pleased for you that you, you do so well. I have a few comments that I will share with the superintendent and the board chair that might help to make it even better. For people like me from the outside viewing it, there are things that, you know, we don't know. And you never know that you have one parent or one citizen who has never attended a school board meeting at all. So there are things that you could do to help that person to become, uh, more engaged with you. Okay, thank you very much. Well, the other thing is because I am here, you get the credit for this retreat.
So, uh, you always wonder why do, why is Ms. Bernat always here? Ms. Bernat is always here, or in this case, Ms. Bowie. Because I do want you to have the credit for our time. And we're taking that deep dive into the content that's spoken, um, for Tim Brown. And so at this time, going to go up and going to bring up the Robert Abosa. He is going to, Dr. Abosa, most of you have met, um, Board Member Anderson. It's not, but Dr. Abosa is a third of the superintendents in multiple districts. Uh, and then also supports a lot of different superintendents. And so he was with us at our first board retreat. And we talked about our norms and things of that nature. And when you hear, and you've heard, Ms. Board Member Anderson, when people, um, some of our team members will say, oh, there is no one south now besides Jane. This is why that comment is made because we're, or who is sitting there with, in north with me? Huh, because we are full FEMA type people. Uh, and so that all came from the team building portion that we did that also Dr. Abosa facilitated for us. So it's time. We have a new family. And so it's time for us to now engage in another team building norm setting.
Um, well, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Um, I've been watching from a distance. Um, I live in South Florida and as was mentioned, um, longtime educator, recovering. I spent the last five years working with school districts across the country. Ironically, Anchorage, Alaska is the school board that I support, which is always fun thinking about going from West Palm Beach to Anchorage, Alaska four times a year. Um, but it's, it's quite, um, interesting what was mentioned about the complexity of today's school board and the issues that you all face. Um, I wanna congratulate you on a very, very good first year. Um, I mentioned the first time I got to meet Dr. Whitaker quite some time ago and that you had landed a very, very good educator who also, um, is, is a master at improving outcomes for all children. And I think you'll probably be pleased with some of the results that will be eventually tricking out. Whereas no different than other states, they do take time to get your test results. But I wanted to just bring us back for a moment. And one of the things that, um, all school boards need to focus on is outcomes, goals, priorities. And you may not always agree on every little nuance, uh, but as a team, we need to understand each of us brings our own personal lived experience and also personal, um, direction. We talked about northeast, southwest last time. Today, we're gonna do something a little bit different. Um, and we're gonna do some of it alone and some of it together to really just try to get ourselves warmed up and go back to this issue of how are decisions made? How do people contribute? How do, you know, how do we get all of these pieces moving together? Okay? Um, so you all know everyone in the room, right? Everybody's met each other. I'm gonna have you mix up just a second. Uh, what I'd like for you to do, and this has absolutely nothing to do with education, so don't worry about it. I want you to begin this. Take one at a time. Alright, so here's the scenario. We are lost on the moon, okay? And actually, let me read it out loud. I know you have it as smart as you. Your spaceship has just crash-landed on the moon. You were scheduled to rendezvous with the mothership two hundred miles away on the lighted surfaces. But the rough landing has ruined your ship and destroyed all the equipment onboard, except fifteen items listed on the backside of this page. Your crew's survival depends on reaching the mothership. So you must choose the most critical items available for this trip. Your task is to rank the fifteen items on the back page from the most important as number one to the least important as number fifteen. The first part, you will do on your own, okay? And you will have a very short period of time to do so. On the back page, you'll see where it says your rank. On the back. So you'll, you can't have any ties. You can't say, you know, three of them were numbers in rank. Force rank, one through fifteen. Read the scenario again on the back page. It's the same. And I'm gonna go ahead and start the time. There's pressure for you all.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Oh, my God.
Goodness.
Did we crash on the lighted surface or is that just where the mothership was?
I can only tell you what's there.
Well, I mean, we would know that though, right?
Oh, my God.
Nope. No, it's, it's good. It's a good question. The only information I can give you is on the sheet, okay? Begin. Eight minutes. Two minutes. Just two minutes. Alright. Everybody good? Amanda, everybody good? Alright, so here's what we're gonna do next. You cannot change those answers, okay? Leave those the same. What I want you to do now is we're gonna number up into three groups. I'm gonna count, I'm gonna have you count out loud. And then we're gonna do the same activity together, but in different parts. So you can stand up, take your pen with you, and we'll work together in groups. So count off, one.
One.
Two.
Three.
Four. Oh, one, sorry.
Two.
Three.
Three.
The back, one.
Two, three.
Excellent. Alright, so grab your pen, grab your paper. One, meet up here. And then you guys can huddle here, decide where you wanna either stand up or sit somewhere. Two's in the middle, three's in the back. What number are you?
Two.
Two. Two.
Yeah.
That's okay.
No, 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 no.
Whoa. Yeah, that's. Cause one is. Alright.
I think the position we want.
Alright. Sheldon, let me give, let me give a little bit of the same thing. So you now have fifteen minutes to work together in groups. You cannot use cell phones to do this, okay? So you have fifteen minutes. Begin.
But so, well, I think. Okay, I just, I already got a.
It sounds like a reminder that not being sound.
Well, you remembered your. Have more. Alright, so you guys are proceeding. Make sure the other kids don't talk too loud.
So, that's about number one. I could just say. But, but after that, we're supposed to keep staying around because we're on the moon and it's the ground. Which can you check?
I think the room is not a bad one.
Cause at first I didn't have it in there. But then I was there.
But, yeah, I.
You've got twelve minutes.
Twelve minutes, okay.
And me and Frankie being. Hey, that happened. We have a business. I think we already had a mask on here.
We're in trouble.
Yeah. But you're, you're trying to get it out.
We, we got the.
But I could see why not.
I would say, I would say the children.
I would not. So I need to say, you know, I had, you know, I had a room. Well, that's why, that's why the masks are so low. They're all like fire.
I think that, remember, man.
Well, I see.
My.
Self-avoiding, right?
So once I got there, I was. It was.
We presented so much. Those, uh, we left California. Hi.
I'm just gonna wait. Do you like water?
I don't make shit, babe.
No, we were.
We know she's going into drift.
Yeah, I know.
Y'all have, they should be able to. Actually, probably.
And we need protection.
It depends a lot. I mean, actually, probably depends a lot.
Yeah, but that depends.
Yeah. We're trying to help.
But I don't know. I was about to.
Fairytale.
I don't know. But that's why.
I think, what if you do? What if we take a road.
Sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. When do you use the boat? I think, I think the parachute.
I did too.
I'm wearing a shirt.
Well, it doesn't, the mothership's two hundred miles away on the light.
Yeah, I.
I have a first.
So the week of the photograph. But one kid.
I, I, I mean, it's not that far. But there, I did, if there's a head center.
So, do you have.
I would assume in my eyes.
I have. You know, you're.
You know. You know, I... No, I...
It goes in that raft.
I've read it.
Y'all have three minutes.
Fourteen, you might shoot a margin. Yeah, we were... Well, that is, and...
Well, why don't they come out later, you can backseat, like hundreds ago.
That our life is done.
If we're starting around, I'm caring. That's when you use the button.
One minute, one minute warning. Finish up your last one.
You're like, four hundred miles, boom.
All right, hands up. Hey, I just handed each of you the answers that came from NASA scientists with a short explanation. What I'd like for you to do now is, on that sheet right now, the correct answer on the form.
Right here, you'll play on that.
Ready? Each of you should have some. With a short explanation. All right, so...
Okay.
Individual, that's them. If the team numbers are identical, the individual numbers will be... Hey.
Okay.
And their absolute number is not negative. Now, you... One here.
No. Is the difference between me and X?
Right, we'll be here. There you go.
Yeah, and then by...
There you go. So individually and then... Here, add those. Once you're finished calculating, um, you can go back to your... You got a degree? Are you... Take your sheet with you.
I'm sorry. I'm an engineer, I'm not a thing. Yeah.
I was, um, was a forensic scientist, chemist. So I just remember at some point, like, when my kids were taking chemistry in high school, it's like, no, you can ask your mom that.
Yeah. Not sure if my kids like what I can do in the classroom.
Yeah, that's right, it's hard to tutor your own kids, they don't wanna, they don't wanna take help from parents.
Thank you.
No.
All right. So, we're gonna see how competitive you all were. Um, on team number one, raise your hand if you were on team number one. Who had the lowest individual score on team number one? What did you, what was your individual score? Forty-six.
You're two, right?
No, she's one.
Yep, forty-six. Forty-six, what was yours?
I'm higher.
What was it?
Sixty-one.
Okay. Who else was team one? Where's the other team ones? You haven't added it up yet? Okay, we're gonna say sixty. Sixty. Okay, so the lowest on the group was fifty-one?
Forty-six.
Forty-six, okay. That was group one. What was your team score?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, okay. So it's interesting, almost all of those individuals were in the fifties and sixties, and yet as a team came up with a better score. We'll just put a pin in that for a moment. Let's go to group number two. Raise your hand if you were group number two, and, and I'm gonna ask you, what was your individual score?
Twenty.
Eighty?
Thirty.
Thirty, okay. So you're the winner in that group, give him a round of applause, that's a nice number. What was your group score?
Thirty.
Okay, so you went from, what? To thirty? Forty to thirty? Okay.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, no difference. And your, yours was an anomaly, what was yours?
My team just took me down.
Well, his individual score was lower than the team score, right?
Let's put a pin in that, we're gonna come back to that as a discussion point in a moment, okay? Let's go to group number three, raise your hand if you were group three. Excellent, what was your individual score?
Fifty.
Fifty.
Seventy.
Seventy. Sixty-eight. Thirty-three. Very good. Thirty-three was the low, give him a round of applause for thirty-three. What is the team's score?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two? Wow, very good score, right? So again, that entire team, also as a group collectively, got a better score. Now, let me push you, as a group, start the discussion, right? So I randomly selected you, you went, what was your strategy? We'll start with you, what was the strategy at the beginning? What were the team members saying?
We first started out with the one or two things that looked the most important, and then we looked at the one or two things that looked the most useless, so we...
All right, so you took two polar opposites, one that seemed the most important, one that seemed useless. Yeah? And what was, how did you get to the useless part?
It was all based on whether there was oxygen there, so we looked at some things and we realized that because there was absolutely no oxygen, we thought that those things wouldn't work, so we started ruling those things out.
Okay, so someone knew some facts about the moon, right? Maybe there's no, the compass might not work because there's no, there's no magnetic field, right? Someone may have said, well, matches aren't gonna work because there's little to no oxygen on the moon.
Well, there's two hundred pounds of it, but probably not super accessible, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Did anyone on that group emerge as a leader? And were they selected, or they just emerged as a leader with your group? Or was it a collective...
I think it was sort of a, I think it was sort of a collective thing, I think, as is often the case, Hans was kind of like, well, this is what, if, if we put this together, then, you know, are we on the light side of the moon, or the non-light side of the moon? And then, you know, everybody was like, ah, and then Sergio was like, well, what if we started, what, what would happen if we built these things? Like, what if we put these things together? And I was like, we're not gonna survive a minute with no water and no oxygen. So then we were like, all right, what, then I think everybody was kind of like, okay, so what things are, do we absolutely need, and what things do we absolutely not need? So I wouldn't think that anybody was like the absolute leader, but everybody kind of had a different perspective, and that's kind of how we arrived at that strategy.
How many of you knew a lot of things about the conditions of the moon? Raise your hand if you felt like you knew generally some stuff about the moon. Yeah, four or five? How many of you feel like you knew little to nothing about the moon? Yeah? Okay. Interesting, group number one, did any, what was your strategy on starting the conversation?
I think we started with the, once again, what is it that we all agree that we must have, one to five?
So you went all the way down to five?
Yes, we talked about the top five.
Okay.
And then after that, we did some talk about the end, and then we just kind of played in between there.
Played in between? Did anyone emerge there as the absolute sort of like, hey, let me sort of sort this out? Was there any discussion about that?
No, I think we all would ask the questions that were necessary to find out what that person was thinking, and we all learned a little bit about what we do know and do not know about the moon.
Were people honest about that? Did, did anyone convince you to change your score? And now looking back, you changed it from right to wrong.
Well, my group, Randy and Jake, the legal thing.
They, oh, there was a little violence on your group. Okay. All right, that was group number one, where's, uh, group number three, raise your hand? Well, did anyone emerge as, hey, kind of, let me sort of lead? Who was that?
Uh, McCall.
Okay. And what, uh, did you all agree to that? Or, how did, how did... So how did it emerge that, that McCall was...
Got her pen out, she said what we were gonna do, we all kind of agreed, Jane and I got distracted, and it worked out.
It worked out. Wa- wa- was it frustrating that someone...
A lot like a regular board meeting. No, I didn't...
Was anyone frustrated that she took the pen out and said, hey, let's get this going? You felt like your voices were still able to push back and ask questions, agree and disagree? Yeah? Okay, interesting. So, I, I asked this question about this notion between sort of, the individual score may have been better than the team score. Is that individual, did they speak up enough to try to convince the group to possibly see it their way? Or maybe you were convinced the opposite way? Someone was very convincing that we needed the matches, but didn't really know much about the moon. How often, in our own worlds, whether it's on the board or cabinet members, this is the same for you? Where someone comes in and may try, by this reading approach, they're very confident, right? This reading approach really works, and we may say, well, I'm kind of a math person, I don't know a lot about reading, and therefore I'm gonna trust a hundred percent that you are right, because it is an uncomfortable zone for me. Does that make sense? And they come to find out they were wrong. Because we didn't remember trust yet verify, which is, show me the research that what you're doing actually works. Does that make sense? The opposite is also true. One of the lowest individual scores I've ever seen was a young lady, maybe twenty-seven, she was chief of communication in a little town, uh, near Columbus, Ohio, who had almost all the answers right, but didn't feel like she could find her voice to convince the others. Maybe it was gender-related, maybe it was age-related, right? She was a communication person, and I thought, that's interesting. Sort of, you would expect that a communication person would be able to convince in others, but she was a writer, right? And more of a strategist. So the question is, what parts of our lives also might we be influenced, um, and not speak up enough to influence? And we see a decision that maybe isn't the right one, but we, and for whatever reason, might not feel, maybe the conditions aren't right, maybe there's not enough psychological safety, where we've created as either a board or cabinet, and, and y'all, I'm looking at you in the back, because this happens a lot in your world, right? The board talks a lot about the, the what, what needs to happen, uh, and you have to get after the how. How does it work? How does it happen? How do we reach the goals that the board have identified as a priority? Does that make sense? What other small tidbit of, 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 uh, sort of knowledge might we pull out of an activity like this? What resonated with you? Yeah? Teamwork? Speak more about that.
Um, teamwork, like, back then, um, we were better together.
Yeah. There was a big difference in your groups, almost all of them.
Yeah, no, I definitely agree there, but I think I am a lot like Hans in that there was a lot, like, what I put is, are we trying to get to the mothership? Are we trying to stay alive? And so, I, for me personally, at times, I feel like I need more information. Be able to get to the understanding here, choose these things.
Right. So, in order, and if you had been with us on the north, south, west, east, that's the person who wants what? Details. Do you remember that? Wants details. I was the complete opposite, as superintendent, I want one-pagers, because I have to hire good people, and I have to trust, uh, yet verify, that the work you're bringing me is important. But there are individuals who want details, they wanna know, are we on the right, on the, uh, dark side, light side? What other details can you give me? Please, given to you, just a teeny little paragraph, right? Yeah, so it sounds like there was some respect already established, right? And you have to also show a little bit of, um, sort of humility. Right, say, you know what, I can meet you halfway. I think it's thirteen, you think it's seven, maybe we can be somewhere between. What else? Anything else resonate?
He didn't forget to have fun.
Did you have fun in life? So here's, here's the thing about teamwork. You have to be able to pivot between, like, being absolutely serious, like you're surgeon, making sure that the surgery goes well, but also giggling a little bit and keeping things in perspective. This post-COVID world that educators are living in right now, under, it's always been a tremendous amount of stress. And today's world with us trying to make up the gains, trying to get kids back on track, their mental health, their wellness. It's tough. It's tough. Yep? What else?
I think it, one thing we did was, I think it's okay to change strategies in the middle. Uh, not because something's not working, but just because you find a better way. I think we started out doing things in a very traditional way. We were like, alright, one, two, three, four, five. And then we were kind of like, things got a little, there were some shades of gray when we got to like five, six.
Yep.
And we were like, alright, we're going to start at fifteen and work our way backwards and meet in the middle. We'll start with the thing that sounds the most useless and then do fifteen and sixteen. It's not because we were, we didn't, we saw that the way we're doing it was wrong. We just thought that maybe we might be more successful.
Yep.
Try it a different way.
Yeah, so I like to use that sort of, this, this notion of narrowing variability. When you do systems level work, you don't nec-, you want great results for all kids. You want to narrow variability. And I use restaurants a lot in this example, like Chick-fil-A. If you came to West Palm Beach and had Chick-fil-A with me, it would taste exactly the way it does in Atlanta, right? Because they narrow variability and they're very tight on, on how they manage things. We don't want to be that tight with our elementary schools, however. We want to make sure that the kids don't have a dramatically different experience from one school to the other, right? And so part of that is us trying to understand this pivot of what do you hold tight, what do you let loose? Because you also don't want to say, everybody's going to be on page thirteen, I'm making that up, on Wednesday. And there's variation there. So for the cabinet members in this space, I'll tell you, I'll, I'll speak directly to you on this issue of decision-making. We didn't really start off in a formal way saying, hey, how are we going to make these decisions? But often, we regularly set decisions. Like, how did we change gifted programming? And I knew nothing about that, right? I'm not saying that you said that. But there will be times in your tenure that you'll say, how did I not know that, right? You also can't be so much in the weeds that you don't get your job done because it's taking you twenty days to make a decision. So I want you to, your homework assignment, to go back, and Amanda's smiling, which means you're writing this down. Is to go back and really discuss decision-making from the board table to the cabinet to the execution. And for you all, the decision-making, I think, is very clear. Dr. Whitaker has done a very nice job in setting out plans on communication, expectations, et cetera. And so periodically, and I know you do this, um, you have quarterly opportunities to formally talk to her about, are you getting the information you need? Do you feel like we're heading in the right direction with a big bucket that you think is a priority for a community that you serve? Does that make sense? Okay. Awesome. Thank you. I took you way out of space. Now I'm going to take you way, bring you back here to the City Schools of Decatur. And we're going to pivot, um, over, let me get that sheet. Want to provide a little bit of context?
Yes.
Get started on this.
So, um, board management oversight. So when, uh, we talk about the work that we do as a team on a monthly basis, it's really, uh, the board meeting. But there is so much that we do on that day, but there are so many different parts to that day, as well as the way you feel prepared for that day. Now, I know, you all know, I have a plan and a process and a calendar probably for everything. So yes, we did have a calendar that was something that was really more so, I needed to feel the City Schools of Decatur and the amount of information, what was important to the community you this year. So at the beginning of the year, I sat with cabinet and we talked about the entire board work plan. It's something that is a document, and it's listed in many documents that you have for my evaluation, but it wasn't necessarily anything that I brought to you. It was more so, let me work a little bit with the cabinet to see what they desire to bring forth to you, while I listened to you to hear what's important to you beyond, obviously, the top five. And I say my top five, which is literacy, intervention, closing the achievement gap, everything organizational leadership, compensation, and communication. Those were my top five that I knew I needed to bring forth to you all the time. So now, we have an anchor text, which is great on their behalf. It talks about having what would be considered a work plan or oversight of the pieces of work that are very much important to this board. And so you've seen this, uh, you, um, already. But as you can see, we've outlined through all of the types of meetings. We've also outlined when they would occur per month. We've also outlined the four strategic accelerators of the strategic plan. The focus specifically on data. And what would be relevant, what would be timely, what would be unembargoed more than likely. And then the two pieces, which really are your job. It's the budget, obviously, the calendar. And then the superintendent evaluation, which is number three, but it's not necessarily in a column, but more so in a row because it tells you where it occurred. So, I'm going to turn it over.
Alright, so thank you. Um, there's science behind this. There's like stuff you absolutely need to know. I always joke and say, as a mechanic, it's almost like the superintendent is the mechanic. Um, you're the customer, you're there, she lifts up the hood and she's showing you underneath the hood, what's happening underneath the hood, right? So that you say periodically, I'm bringing you a board workshop on special education. That's in September, right? Um, and we're going to walk through all the bits and pieces of work that we do about special education because you should know that. That's your job. It's oversight. There may be a time where they come and give you some information about social emotional learning. Last year, uh, and we're going to talk a little bit about this too. This isn't just for you to look at and say, oh, this is nice to know. There's also metrics tied to that, which we'll get to a little bit later, right? So that you can see, okay, last year, the kids said that they had one caring, loving adult on campus that they go to. Sixty-two percent of kids said that they did. Which means there's a pretty good chunk that's don't. So what are we doing to make sure that number keeps going up each year? Does that make sense? And so your, your superintendent has put together a bit of a straw man saying, this is the way I see it, based on what best practice is, but also understanding what I've been able to share with you. So for example, would you need to do a workshop on transportation every year?
Possibly.
Maybe. Maybe. I don't know, right? Uh, some districts, you may say absolutely a hundred percent because our transportation system is broken and all I get is complaints about transportation, therefore, I want to keep a much closer eye on it. Does that make sense? So in Palm Beach, I can assure you, transportation was a major issue. We, we, we bus a hundred thousand kids a day. So there was always an issue with transportation. My board wanted to see those metrics, uh, three or four times a year. How did we open school? How did this opening of school compare to last, right? Other places, so for example, on budget, you should be getting information monthly on budget, right? Because that's your top priority. Your top priority, policy, superintendent is, you get to decide and approve the budget and you get to decide the policy, right? And then the staff that's sitting behind you goes and executes on that. So, uh, do you want me, do you want to walk, let's walk through these? And what, here's what I want you to think about. Is there anything that's missing? That you say, you know, I get a lot of questions about athletics, for example. I'll give you an example. When I was superintendent of Fulton County, part of our constituent services support each month, my secretary would say, these are all the complaints that came in that had this particular topic. And I noticed very early on that in August and September, the number of parents complaining about the way teams were picked, the way the names were displayed, there's a lot of clunkiness. What that signaled to me is, I need to hire a new athletic director and I need to put in very, very tight processes. Who, by the way, he just became the superintendent.
Yeah, he did?
Yeah. So that athletic director came in, tightened stuff up. And then next year, after things got better, the board didn't want to hear anything about acti-, uh, sorry, athletics anymore. Because we had solved that issue. Does that make sense? And then we could just give them an annual one-pager.
So, um, to walk you through, and you have a copy of this in front of you as well. So for the board meeting, this portion is really what you would see either in free, either in work session or obviously in the board meeting yourself, but more so in work session. And so, that's our operable data system. Now, they're saying that word for school, we still use that phrase for nine months. I need to bring to you where we are. Uh, the state of HR, I've said that we would have monthly data, um, updates on HR. And then you would have the state of HR, which includes where we have landed everything to do what? Open school in regards to staff. The policy is, of course, reviewing the twenty-four, twenty-five plan overall. And then by this point, we're thinking, uh, what we are discussing right now, JCEC, student demonstration and strike, would be for free. Then we have our board retreat. By this point, I would expect our milestone data to be, um, public. So we will be able to have that public conversation. We will talk about MAP-K two scores from spring of twenty-four, basically what they just finished, um, just a moment ago. And APIB, because those scores would be back. So that, everything here mirrors pretty much what we did last August. But we'll be able to have an update on the interoperable data system. So I will be able not to be pecking, but actually, you will be able to go into Tableau. We will go into Tableau and talk about not only the analysis of the data, but the strategies that we're doing to address the results that we see.
Alright, so hold, hold, hold right there. So that's, that's August. Right? Makes sense? Pretty simple. Anything glaring there that may be missing that you say, well, opening of school seems kind of broad? What does that mean?
Yeah, that, so two things I wondered about. In the building and sustaining and engaging and cult-, inclusive culture, I look down, I see August, September, all the way to December. So where is, we're opening school, right? And so I guess I'm wondering, where is everyone's mind space, attitude, et cetera? Like, where does that land? I, I feel like I want to know that because I'm drawing from my own experience as a teacher. Like, once the first day starts, that's it.
I'm not sure I'm following. You say that, again?
I guess I want to know, like, we're doing exit surveys, I believe. That's open for the next week, right? So exit survey stuff, and it's going to be used, is that in HR? Where is culture from a staff perspective?
Is in-
Or what does that look like?
That's the state of HR. So this, this actual strategic accelerator is around students.
Okay.
Not around adults.
Okay. So then-
This strategic accelerator.
Okay. So then I guess my next question is, why wait until September for the social emotional learning plan if school's starting in August?
Because, so-
So this is just an update on what's happening.
Okay, alright, okay.
You can't, that doesn't mean these people, the teachers-
Yep.
Haven't already been given the tools and training. That just means we're going to walk you through what's happening under the hood-
Yep.
With this particular topic. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So my guess is during the summer, if there's anything changing, there'll be training, development, new software, whatever, that supports that. And then here's where they explain to you how things are going.
Since we're transitioning out of MAP, is the assumption that we'll go over kind of where, what scores and how students are performing mid-year around January? Since the MAP is falling off and then we're going to STAR, is that kind of what I should assume?
So that's where STAR is in January, the STAR update is in January, because we are no longer-
Because there's no more of that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
The, the, I do, I do want to touch a little bit on, on what Tracy was saying, though. And maybe this is actually a part of state of HR, but we, we've had a lot of conversations about teacher surveys and trying to get the voice of the teacher. And so if that's coming under the state of HR, great, okay. Um, then the other thing I was going to ask is, um, I, I don't know how possible this is. But it's always, when, when we're looking at student performance with these, you know, six-month tests, things that have been embargoed for half the year, we're always way late, basically, in looking at it. Is there any way, is it reasonable to be looking at the student performance, uh, within their classes kind of on a more regular basis? Like, how, but how are they performing on summatives? How are they performing? Like, how many students are struggling in the classes? And, and what are the pivots that we're taking to kind of address some of that, I guess, would be?
So that really is the assessment use within ETSF and AEC for attendance behavior and to be see of course attainment or also just-
Okay, okay, yeah.
That is what this is. That is, how, how are we actually using the assessments that we get? So you have STAR beginning year in data.
Yeah.
So the STAR is given in place of the MAP. So you give the MAP and now you give the STAR in August. And then we just aggregate that data in September.
Yeah.
But now, we move into October and take an even closer dive into the ways in which we are using the stuff.
I want to make one little distinction, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
So I don't want you to think about these things as markers of where it's happening for staff. This is a marker of where you, as a board, get to look under the hood.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, I understand that.
And the, the reason why I'm asking the question, I mean, we just read the book, right? Like, literally every meeting needs to have something about student outcomes-
Right.
In the meeting.
Yes.
And that feels like sort of the perennial, available, repeatable, monthly review of student performance.
And we are going to a new grading scale.
So STAR is like your I-Red.
Okay. Is, is there usage associated with it? Like, do kids have to use some?
In all of that, we do. So, so STAR, STAR has a lesson component that is similar to the I-Red lesson component and all of that with the N. So that's what the assessment is. You can put in those parameters. We can-
I, I like what you're saying. And what you're saying is, what's my glimpse into the student achievement piece? Even if it's just a fifteen-minute something to overview to keep that grounded as a priority. Let's put a pin in that. I don't want to, I, I think there may be some opportunity. So for example, one thing you could do are failure rates, right? So for example, at the nine-week period at your high school, what percentage of students got an S, right? Ninth grade in particular, huge indicator for graduation problem. If the kid fails English one or Algebra I, that could be a data point that comes to the board at that nine-week period. I hear what you're saying.
And I think it's, oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I think it's piggybacking on that, but also looking at what we're doing new. So my understanding is we're adopting new textbooks. My understanding is we're rolling out some new curriculum materials. We're definitely doing new honors courses and we're adopting a new grading scale. And so with all of that-
So with the new textbooks-
Yeah.
New ELLA standards.
Yeah.
They are only being trained next year. They're not using those standards or using those textbooks. They're being trained because they don't go into effect until the fall.
So when we adopted the new textbooks, those will not be used for this school year? Okay. But the new grading scale will be used. And we, the district will be creating new assessments. Is that correct?
There are some assessments being created, yes.
Okay, so yeah, that's where I think I'm kind of falling with Hans here. If we are having a new grading scale and some new assessments, so what does that look like that's separate from the state-produced tests or STAR or MAP?
So we can add in for the student data bookers, at the end of the four and a half weeks, tell you what were there at the end of the nine weeks. We can provide a report on what the grades are.
The grades for-
Progress reports, I mean, what are student-
Because it just feels like it's so over-
Because it just feels like it's so overwhelming, like, K through twelve, how much?
Maybe it's middle one hundred.
I was in tri- fifth grade. So you're right, yeah, because it's just, I mean, it's just.
I, I mean, I, I think we have said that we want to see the achievement gap close. And so I would be particularly interested in seeing free and reduced lunch, low-income performance on those metrics. Like, I mean, like, that's the metric we want to see move, right? Not just, it really is that specific, that subset of students that we want to see succeed.
I, I would like to say that we have, you know, eighteen hundred students at the high school. And if we are using new things, I think, and a new grading scale, which I believe says fifty is the, like, there's no longer a zero, it's a fifty. So I think it's important we are looking at that too, not just closing the achievement gap. And then, I think to your question, Jenna, I may be wrong in this. Isn't it simply a readout of, this is the number of ninth graders that have apps? Doesn't have to be anything else, and then if you wanted the subset, I mean, is that what I'm hearing? You're asking, you're saying, is it too much data? And Hans, you're saying, I want to look at this particular group.
So, there are a couple of things. In a high school, would you want, think about, you have four core content.
Mm-hmm.
And grade level, grade band differences across four grades.
Mm-hmm.
And this is where the board has to stay via, you know, Jenna said, that would be overwhelming to say, "I want a report out of sixteen," it's not sixteen classes.
Mm-hmm.
It's the A P version, it's the I V version, it's the advanced version, it's the Gen Ed version, it's the remedial version on what would be potentially four different grade levels. So now, we're taking that five, taking it by four would be potentially twenty versions, and that's just high school.
That, no, I think the better way is to identify particular predictors and particular points of value.
Yes.
And then how they're presented is important. This year, what's new about this year from years past? And how does this compare to one-year, five-year, what we're doing? But I, but I'm with you. If you just give me a four thousand-page Excel doc and tell me what to find, Hans is going to talk my ear off for the next month and a half, and I'm going to check out. I am. But if it's like, this is important, let's talk about this and how to improve it. Oh, and I left off, and what we're doing about it.
That's the key piece.
Yeah.
So, with the student data focus, and what has been selected, we've selected the pieces and what we're doing about it that we know matter to this district. And so, I can obviously add, and that's why this is the straw man, adding in a grading report. I would say the, one of the greatest predictors for success is Algebra one.
Yeah, University of Chicago has this whole study that said, "English one, Algebra one, ninth grade predicts higher than any other thing, high school graduation and potential college and career military readiness." So that, to me, along with conduct, which is suspension, should be reported to the board when those things come out. You don't need to see those every week, that's going to overwhelm you. What do we look at, at maybe, at the beginning of the year? Do you guys do progress reports? Yeah, so, add a progress report out of nine-week period, and then again, nine-week period, nine-week period.
So four times, we'll add in suspension, ninth grade, basically a one-track report. We have what would be the course attainment and Algebra one, and also your.
And I, I, I do hear from the community a lot, and Tracy said it a few times. Kind of like, how are we teaching, you know, our A P students, our I V students? How are they doing? Um, you know, are we challenging the honor students well enough and pushing them to? As a, as a, we're a school system, that's what we should be talking about occasionally as well.
I think there's got to be some other metric similar to what you're describing for the middle school students. Because before they get to that point where you're just assessing their graduation readiness, there's got to be something at Beacon Hill to assess their high school readiness. So is it, I don't know, something at the seventh-grade level, or is it fifth-grade level? I think that there has been some point for the community that they get to high school, and we can't tell who is I V ready versus Gen Ed ready versus dual enrollment ready. And so there's got to be something at the middle school level that.
I'd agree. Yeah, I'd, I'd, I'd agree. I mean, we, we talk about literacy, we're, you know, post-third-grade question, right? And so, I, I, I very much agree that, I think that there is.
And when you see the K P I's, people see, we have selected specific grade levels and content, specifically in student success in all areas. And, Jenna, we're selecting that for milestone. But for a through line, I would say those would be the content and grade band that we select for this, this report. Because that's, I, we've selected that and talked about that, the K P I.
By the way, there's also another thing that can happen, and it happens all the time. Something changes dramatically in Georgia, the Department of Ed, and, and we may have to make an adjustment. Right? So we have to be okay with a little bit of ambiguity, it's a straw man. Something could change dramatically, or some issue happens, crisis. And then all of a sudden, the community's saying, "I want to know what you guys are doing about that."
Other, so we've kind of talked about maybe the first couple of months. So now, just going through the first half of the year. Anything else? Definitely made note of progress report.
I think, um, I'm wondering, so if we're looking at August in the state of HR, and is there a follow-up in September if it turns out that there is movement or change? Either because allotment numbers changed, or, um, staffing moved, I mean, or is that not? Because in my mind, in my experience, I thought until the beginning of school, until first F T E count, but I, I'm basing it on a much larger school district, there's a lot of fluidity and movement.
And that's, on to you in a big board presentation, it could be included in a weekly news and notes. Um, this elementary school's having two teachers move because of low enrollment. That doesn't have to be on, on the.
Well, we do get that every board packet, um, separations and new hires.
I, yeah, I think my question, though, is, when it's just separation and new hire, I don't know if I understand enough of what I'm reading to put it together if it turns out that you're the teacher that just left, and in the week or two that we're filling the gaps, I don't know, I mean.
But some of that is
Operation.
below the line. So, from a board perspective, to know this is what has changed, and then that would be bad.
Okay.
Um, I was looking at March, the Harvard update.
Mm-hmm.
Because there isn't really any time that we talk about what Harvard is going to be doing from the beginning. So it may, it may be on here somewhere, and I'm just not seeing it, but it would be helpful to know, what are they going to do? So that when we get the update, we know what they were doing.
Okay, go ahead.
That was it. And we, because we did the C I S and the U V A thing.
Yes, which is, and you can see, I literally made it the same month, but not as a retreat, but in a different month. So I'm really trying to get us to an annual where you know things that are happening.
That also helps you, so for example, if you know special, I'm making this up, special ed is in September. You've got some questions, you already begin thinking about what those might be. Um, and then you can tell parents, "Hey, there's going to be a, a meeting about special ed. If you want to tune in and watch, this is something."
And compensation gets launched in the, um, the November board retreat, and then where does it go after that?
It becomes, I was literally a part of.
Question.
Okay. That's just what we, like you said, launch. It becomes a conversation, the entire budget.
What is Navient?
Navient.
Navient?
Navient is the college and career software that we use. So specifically, our students are able to apply to colleges in Navient. Teachers are able to write their recommendations and upload them into Navient. They can find scholarships throughout Navient, it is the one stop shop.
That, that's new.
Yeah, that's absolutely. Second semester this year. So now, we'll be able to tell you fully what does that. That was one of those mid-year adjustments that were.
We use it, and a lot of my students like to see that, oh, is it, you know, seven students from Decatur got into this? I think it tracks where students in the school are applying and accepted and stuff like that. Can I ask a question? I think it was the mentioning of the athletics. Is there a reason why there's no athletics or arts until the end of the school year? Like, is there such?
You'll have it this month.
Oh, okay, thank you, that makes.
And you have to wait until really all the seasons end.
Okay.
So originally, it was in March, in May, and I was like, "Why is it in May? We still know the results if we're having a board meeting in May." So you have it in June, you all see.
And then one other one. The climate surveys and contracts in March. Um, why in March when, at that point, people will have signed their contracts or not signed their contracts, right?
So, climate survey is going to be one that we will develop our own climate survey. And so we will be able to provide you based upon the H R window, those results at that time.
Yes, the survey's not happening in March, the survey's happening all prior to that, as we get the results.
This is when you are in the public. At the back in.
Question about the policy calendar generally. I would say, a point of frustration for me is that we just don't have policies on a lot of stuff. Luke, can you walk me through what will happen for, pick one, like, the fiscal management?
Mm-hmm.
September?
So, in the policy, so we kind of go back to August. For the policy plan, twenty four, twenty five. We'll start with revisiting our audit that we have from last year, where are we now? And then, from there, based upon those same priorities. But what is so important for us to, basically, we're at risk, um, fiscally, legally, and the such. And then from there, be able to give you some more meat behind that, but that will come fully in the work of the summer.
So that plan will kind of outline what we want to attack, what we want to write during the course of the school year? Okay, are we, um, are we going to, are we going to compare it to other districts? Like, what do they have that maybe we don't? What, what other steps are we going to go through there?
That's the audit part.
Okay.
So we do, uh, what we see are benchmark districts in the metro and like-sized districts outside of the metro.
Okay.
And what they have as far as all of their policies, along Excel spreadsheet. And then we have where we are. So that will be part of the audit that you will see, so that we can create, co-create what that plan would look like for the year. So, um, some of that is that July work, that's not necessarily a meeting, but all of our one-on-ones, so that we're, we have a, a plan to discuss.
So, so the expectation ever be on the board for us to go through and look at what policies we have and?
No, we provide that to you, we already have it. We have that full audit, ben- benchmarked to all of the light districts, we have a, a link.
Uh, because didn't we start that process when we, last year, when we partnered with G S B A to figure out, as we were transitioning from the Carver model to, um, to, yeah.
And then we, we added one to that, and Amanda is.
I'm, I'm dying to talk for just a second. Um, no, I think a couple of things, because last year, so next year, a couple of things will happen. One, obviously, anything else that's a board priority, you feel something, you know, we need to create a policy around it. We know sometimes things come up, I E. policy E E., you know, things like nutrition, things like that as well. Um, but I think another thing that, that will roll in as well is, not this past year, but the year before, when we saw those must-have policies in place with G S B A.
Right.
So now we also have to work in what policies, we have to start working in reviewing existing policies as well. So what policies do we exist? Where might they be in tune or out of tune? Where might we need to do some adjustments? Where are the just, these are still good? Um, because you want to get in a regular cycle of also reviewing existing policies to make sure that they're still reflecting the what that you want it to reflect. So, like we said, we've got the whole policy audit, we kind of used it this year to put some key ones into place and ones that came up. But we will continue to work on that based on the values of the board, what policies we still need to exist, still need to create. There, because they're a value of the board and the community, because really, we need them from a liability perspective, or a best practice perspective, or something that. So it'll be creating and reviewing as we move forward.
And reviewing is a very, things change over time. You surprise some of the policies that may be in place that are antiquated, and that maybe don't even protect you legally.
I was just going to, the offer as a suggestion. Um, I, I just don't think the community really pays attention to the budget until after tentative approval. So if we're going to have a community meeting about it, maybe we have the budget Q and A community meeting in April as opposed to the one in March, and do the type of topics in March.
Well, yeah, that's fine. And we just added, added two.
Yeah.
Um, we added the first one, because of the experience, but we, you know, budget Q and A will be in both. We can have it in both.
Oh, okay, yeah, I know.
That's what it, that's what it.
That's what you want to be difficult, yeah. Because I, I ju- I just think people don't pay attention until, until, until we've actually taken a vote, and then they freak out.
But I wonder, how can, what can we do to encourage folks to pay attention early in the process? Because it's, it's frustrating for me, after we have had all these meetings, and then folks come in attack mode. And I'm like, "We've been talking about this for months now." And so how can, because even then, if to have a, you know, I, I mean, a Q and A is always going to be valuable. But it feels like, folks feel like we've done something sneaky. And, and I, I'm just wondering, how can we, you know, get that, uh?
I think the budget calendar having a more prominent, reoccurring communication this year, this upcoming year, is something we need. Um, we're very deliberate in what happens which month. Um, one, so that you, it will be able to be passed one time, and we can actually execute it the following year. But we have to inform the community that this conversation is occurring. And that is something we have a opportunity to do better. Know that community meetings didn't exist
And.
prior to this year. And it was burst really out of, because you hadn't gotten to that point in the book, but I think maybe just have read it, um, with the grading policy. And the absence of said grading policy. But I think the community needs to know how loud the community meeting is when you step from behind. The day is to have that two-way conversation. And that makes a big difference in the community versus when you're, when you're not.
And I, you know, I wonder, I, I don't know if we are currently doing this, but how we're using the S L Ts and the P T As to help us get that message out, um?
And I will say, from an advisory standpoint, they're very tuned in and working. And when I say tuned in and working, I meet with them monthly. I meet with all P T A presidents, and I meet with all S L T representatives. And they said they felt fully informed and used all of the information to discuss within the.
But, you know, I'm thinking of what you said, James, and now what you're saying, Jenna. And, you know, I was looking at stuff, because I'm new to this. And I, as you all have figured out, don't mind going through pages of things to look at things. But, so on one hand, I do think we are communicating, but kind of like you said about policy, James, like, do I have to look at the website and go through the policies to understand it? So, I, I think there's still room for a little more. So I, I think there's still room for a little more information, not just communication. Um, and so.
Well, I understand communicate that we're have, we're going to be having this discussion so you can, they can come and get the information.
Well, like, so for example, I was Googling other school districts just to see across the country what happens. And I noticed like in one place in Virginia, I think they were posting either what the board member had a question about or similar to the feedback that community members gave. Because I do think to a degree, in my own experience, just as a parent, a teacher, consumer, when I hear your question, it helps me have another question. And so I do think to a degree, we didn't really perhaps, or maybe there's an opportunity there to be using public questions beyond just verbally at a meeting. And then maybe the other opportunity is again, getting more people to these meetings so then we hear more specific questions that lead to others. I appreciated reading the public's comments. And I didn't get that until later.
I think, I think this is, in the classic, a lot of these things, the budget is classic kind of what happens in this district. Want to miss the rumors, get ignited and they kind of, they kind of tumble over and over again. I think we have to maybe meet some, meet some constituents or community members where they're at. Um, and a lot of this gets dispelled as like water cooler, you know, kind of conversation. A lot of it's on social media. I think we had talked about in the past, maybe doing, having an ongoing like portion on the website.
Like an FAQ page.
Yes, a myth and facts. Because we know what the myths are going on out there. Um, when it was the nutrition policy, we knew about two or three, you know, misguided thoughts that just took off like wildfire. And we could just, you know, write those things and with, you know, a couple of paragraphs to dispel them. Um, same thing with the budget. There's a couple of things that people are anchored on. And, you know, a lot of it has to do with compensation. A lot of it has to do with, um, the state's compensation. Has, a lot of it has to do with how the central office is being compensated. Um, and I think we can, um, maybe just take those things, say them directly and then not only go over the numbers, but vote and all those things. But I think we have to meet these people where.
Like a fact page.
Yeah, I think, you know, the community meetings are great. I think it's, you know, we're also going to get some of the same invested people that come to ask some of those questions.
I mean, there's also just like a recognition that it's gonna cha, like, so the, the cabinet compensation was a policy change that we made mid-flight in the course of the budget, right? I mean, things like that, I think it, it is very helpful. A fact page, it can sort of explain, here is the reason for the policy, here is what the policy is trying to accomplish, why it happened. By the way, it was unanimous move, whatever it happens to be. But I think that's a helpful information for the.
But, because I heard you say myth, and I'm concerned that we're kind of conflating two things. So there are facts and there are things we're publishing, and then there are myths. And so what I'm hearing is more, again, more clarity so that there aren't myths created.
There's a difference between, I think, clarifying a fact and then people disagreeing with some of the decisions that we've made. And I think the other thing too is that I think sometimes people may not like on the surface the decision that we've made. And then we do have to clarify why we've made the decision that we've made. Um, it's also the case that maybe all the board members may not agree with the decision that we've made.
Absolutely.
And then I think then it's up to you to go out and explain why you've made the decision that you've made or why you agree, why you think what you think. I think there's also some times where some of these are, some of the things that I've seen are rooted in factual inaccuracy. And then I think that, um, I think the community. That one-on-one dialogue, but maybe one of the ways to launch that is with, um, is with something that's maybe a living, rolling, you know, this is, this is the concern here. Here is the actual.
Yeah, and that's the great thing about it. FAQ page, I shared the one from Cherokee County, which was fascinating. It was like, question one, are my teachers secretly vaccinating my kids at school? Right, like, that's literally the first question on there. And the second question was something like, have they put, is it true they spent four million tax dollars on new, uh, filtration systems in the classroom or whatever? And they were like, sort of, it was paid for, you know, like, but they are right back to back and they are COVID-related. And one, I think, falls in the category of something that I, I missed. But I can see a parent being surprised by that. And then it just kind of gives us room to answer some of those questions. But I think Carmen's right. You're never going to stop people from filling in blanks with. It, it also removes some self-appointed mediators out of the conversation, which I'm pretty. Hey, like, the people that try to be the agents for that information, like, like, it would be nice to have our own place to put the information up so that, uh, we can reference anybody there.
I use the analogy pivoting between playing offense and playing defense. Offense is you taking the lead and sharing, here's the budget, here's the process, here's the information. But you also have to play defense sometimes because someone makes something up, it gets legged, and the defense move is fast, right? Like something on there.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Totally.
Uh, good?
It's great.
We're ready for lunch. Is lunch?
Okay. So we're going to go ahead and break for.
Okay. What's your neighborhood? You know, I don't even know if I knew it existed until Ava. So when was that?
These one and one gift commission from this company. That's somebody is, he's down.
Yep.
So, I'm sure, Sush is going to be a great part of he does all of this. I mean, I understand.
Mm-hmm.
But.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's.
All right, we're going to go ahead and keep the ball moving. So this is the last update for the strategic plan for this school year. And as we know, these have been the three paper documents that have really facilitated my work and cabinet's work, our work over this past year. The first piece is the ninety-day review, which identified our strengths and opportunities according to what I've been calling my big five. Then the second piece is the strategic plan, which is a moving document and we have refined. And so you'll see a new version of that page, um, into fruition after we finish our last pieces today. And then the charter system, which we know that contract was approved a couple of weeks ago in, uh, at the DOE. And so I actually spoke with Alan Mueller today, who's the staff at the DOE. He said I should be receiving an updated contract later this week. So this is the through line to which we are leveraging what would be changed for our students. So, this same document is, uh, or same slide is what we're, we've been working through all of the year, for the entire year. Creating interoperable data system. We identified it. We're continually working on that. I've seen some very promising work that will happen over the summer. So we will even start to see that interoperable data system on a functional forward-facing side through our new website, the visualization tools around the strategic plan. You'll see a screenshot of what that looks like. How do we put our, our strategic plan in Symbly so that everyone will be able to see indicators? We're working on that right now. Creating our targets as well as illuminating the baseline. So these are the things that we're. So where are we ending? This is the first goal, or the first strategic accelerator. And here, as I said a little bit earlier, it's definitely more of a student focus, engagement, inclusivity. So some of the expected outcomes are the interoperable dashboards, having best and its participation at ninety percent or higher. We also had our Yes, I Can Awards, um, and it was a great event and it was our first. And then increasing by at least five percent our students indicating they have a trusted adult. That's a lagging indicator, so we need, we don't know that, those results. But some of the highlights that we have experienced since our last, uh, time we were together in February, we started receiving or providing training to staff beyond the people in the room. So all of administrative staff as well as all principals began to give us feedback around the interoperable dashboards and what they need. Also, Student Board of Education representative, we had that election. We're excited. She will go, Sophie will go with us actually to GSBA as well. Um, her mom will be the chaperone. And so we're excited. Uh, and then we had our all-in, Dr. Sultan attended that. Organizational effectiveness and excellence. So, lagging indicator is a one percent variance between the budgeted and also the actual, the comprehensive budget book. So you saw a draft, drafty, drafty, drafty. But you can see the components of what all will be there. Um, our BitSite cybersecurity rating of an eight hundred and working towards having that legacy park opening in the fall. So these obviously are the highlights, the budget book itself, the approval of the FY twenty-five budget and bringing on Crisisco and Synthetics as enhancing our safety and security features. Cultivating and retaining high-quality professionals. Here are our indicators, where we wanted to be, which is to increase retention rate by five percent. We wanted our, to obviously address compensation, training around project management and also change management. We did have some of our, uh, staff members and a principal. They are fully now ProSci Change Management certified, so they have been to the ProSci training. And we have counted and we have twenty MOUs with the university to help partner. So you saw some of that work highlighted over the past couple of board meetings. So our university partners lunch is where we brought a lot of them in, not all twenty, obviously, but we, we have done that work. The compensation, you know, what was done in FY twenty-five is something that we've not necessarily seen, which is for our teachers to receive a seven to fourteen percent increase. And then, like I said, we have members of our staff who are change management certified. So then finally, you always hear. The road, student success in all areas. We have a lagging indicator with our data, but to increase a very great DLA, EOG, proficient distinguished scores for black students from twenty-seven to thirty-seven percent. Increase the percentage of SWD, scoring developing or above by five percent. And reducing the students, um, black students and ISS, OSS incidents by five percent. That's in process. They're going through data cleanup. And once everything is finished and student record is done, we can actually give you where we are there. Some of the highlights or strategies is obviously our partnership with UVA and also communities and schools helping us with those systems and support the types of data that we collected not only from talking to children or survey, tell me what you think about the student code of conduct and restorative practice handbook, but how we went to ISS. Specifically talked to the students who are in ISS, who would be considered your frequent flyers and said, you, I'm seeking your specific feedback around those students, that knowledge. And that was a, definitely a self-help sign around some of the reasons why people be in ISS. Our algebra outcomes-based contracting, when it comes to the STAR results for students who actually did go to their Algebra I tutoring to know that fifty percent of those students made their growth, made the growth that was predicted on their STAR. That's awesome. And then gas, we are all in no breaks. That is the graduation attainment strategy, uh, supported by NTSS, where we are identifying our students. Ensuring that if they needed an accelerated model, a credit recovery model in order to graduate. What that number looks like, I don't have it, I don't have it today, but I know that strategy did make it. So those are the updates around the strategic plan.
Maybe this is.
Oh, wait, okay. So additional updates in next steps. So this is what it looks like in Symbly. So the strategic accelerators are on the left. Here are the four different strategic, um, objectives that go with them. So we solidified four for each one. And so now the question is, if these are our objectives, what are the key performance indicators for each of those four objectives? So in February, we solidified the objectives. Now it's time to talk about the KPI.
Um, one is just a comment to consider that I just thought about. But the other was around, if you could go back one slide. I had asked this in the last board meeting, but when we're talking about reducing students or incidents by five percent or scoring developing, et cetera, above five percent, making sure that we are doing that on a relative basis and not an absolute basis just so that we're not either over or undercounting what it is that we're doing, right? I just want to make sure that we're, um, still thinking that way with that. And if that doesn't make sense, I'm happy to try to explain it. I just want to make sure that, that y'all understand what I'm saying with that.
Are you saying that if you had ten students this year, but you had twenty last year, you want to know that you're comparing ten to ten, not ten to twenty?
Correct. But, well, on a relative basis, that you're comparing that ratio. Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yep.
We are talking about not only CCRPIs. They are comparing really an apple to an orange. It's a different cohort. But like, I also definitely want to see it in a cohort analysis. What, where were our fifth graders and now where are they at sixth? So I do, I do what both mean.
Yep, yep.
Um, I had a question. Um, I think it was in, not this point of interest, but the previous one about the grant, um, we had applied for, we ended up not getting, dealing with the security stuff. And I just wanted to get clarification on how that was impacting the things that we were planning.
We would never plan to purchase without the primary grant first. So it was going to enhance some of our cybersecurity pieces, but we weren't able to get that. But we were still able to go ahead and, you know, attain the BitSite score that was in our whole eight hundred. It was going to enhance something.
Mm-hmm. So we're, we're not going to do that now?
We can't do that right now. But we will still do some work, um, some pieces around security itself. Physical security, that we are still moving forward with. Even there was an update that came out, I want to say it was Friday or Thursday, for the line item that the governor put in regarding our safety grant money that he's provided to school systems. That will help us offset some of the synergics that we were going to, um, use for enforcement. For the, um, third grade students, um.
For the third grade students, students of color that were in the proficient distinguished score metric on the milestones, if we didn't get to thirty-seven percent, do we know yet where we are?
That's, I'm going to go say, that's just not, oh, yeah, okay. That's why it's on lagging.
That's why it's on lagging.
Okay, gotcha.
And then, this was the cosmetic thing that I was going to mention, but it did occur to me. Do we want to start with student success in all areas as our strategic, our primary strategic accelerator? Right, I mean, we haven't last in the list now, but-
I say the rubber meets the road, which is obviously, I couldn't beat you, you type of buzzers over there.
Yeah, that's me. Sorry, not that one, because then I-
It might be me. Yes. You know, I always say, this is really why we are a school system, and I always give it that footnote, but we can move forward.
I mean, that's, I don't want to push it out, but-
I think-
It's a ceiling.
So, you know, we heard about those two indicators, right, in ninth grade for graduation. So I see graduation attainment strategy. So am I inferring that third grade is your first marker of graduation attainment? Then that second group, is that third grade ELA, or is that just in general of all EOCs?
Tell me again.
So you see the turquoise highlighting for the first SY twenty, yeah, so the incre-, yeah.
SWD?
Yeah, is that all SWD students, or just in third, okay.
And all, correct. And this is where we started the year, when we talk about the KPIs in a moment, we will say, this is why we selected where we are. So this was the, hi!
Yep.
I'm the superintendent. There's the step plan. Go. But now we want to say, okay, this feel like for us moving forward, still knowing that it's a living bringing back.
So then, I think, and maybe this isn't the place, and just tell me, this isn't the place, if part of graduation is actually like coming to school, so we're looking at the behavioral incidences that would be taking a student out of learning, are we going to look at attendance, like will attendance become a marker and/or tardiness if those are also things that could interfere with graduation attendance?
That would be a KPI, and you're on the right sheet.
Okay.
So we're about to go there in a moment.
Ah, I see.
I'll just say, the one thing that I, it's important to me is when we get data broken down by our K twos, I hate percentages and that aren't whole numbers for those school systems. We've done ourselves some disservices in the past. I remember before I was on board, there was something like, oh, there was a thirty-three percent increase in OSS for students of color in Claremont, and it made the news, and it was huge.
Like one person.
And then it went, it did go from one person to, from three people to four.
Yeah.
They're like, oh my, like, and we should be concerned about that, but-
Right.
We do ourselves a disservice when the board, when we don't throw those numbers.
And that speaks to really what Hans was saying about the relative and the absolute.
Yeah, and, yes.
And that is the definition of relative and absolute, especially when the N, I always say, what's the N, what's the true number, and what does that look like?
I think that's the same thing when you're looking at that discipline data. I get really lost in the sauce of the numbers of the OSS and ISS. I think there's also some interesting metrics that are going to play at the school level about when kids are, when they're documenting or when you're getting those numbers, as to when kids are, when those numbers are getting to you. Is it less than one day, or is it less than two days? I think maybe there's also some kids that are getting other forms of discipline, like one or two periods out of class, where it's lost instructional time, or they're getting other forms of discipline, like not being allowed to participate in other learning-based activities, and some of those numbers are being lost there. So I think it would also be helpful to know truly what the metrics are for how we're defining OSS and ISS, when those, when that's being instituted just by a teacher or principal, and when it escalates up to you, because otherwise, I feel like some of the data is a little dirty.
So realize escalating up to me, to be honest, is, that would be an OSS that would be up to ten days, that potentially would be for a period of time of removal from school. That's when it really kind of comes to me. A traditional OSS at any level, elementary, middle, or high, is not necessarily more than that, is at the superintendent level, but it does definitely impact. All right, so now, everyone, they're talking about the KPIs. So you have them in front of you.
I'll clarify a little bit of what you were talking about. There's always going to be a little squishiness, because you'll have a teacher in second grade who gets upset and angry, and they say, go sit in Mrs. Smith's classroom for thirty minutes. Always going to have a little bit, there'll be a little bit of noise, but I think you're spot on in saying, let's try to, again, narrow variability, so that we get closer and closer to a real. Okay, so just to sort of, this was my space in Charlotte, so I get a little nerded out about how I'm excited about the space you're going. I know that some spaces are going to be cleaner and tighter, like third grade reading scores, et cetera, a little cleaner, a little tighter, but in general, you all as a group have talked about your strategic accelerators. And now, from an objective standpoint, these are sort of the four big buckets that then appeal into the performance indicators. Some cases, it's a yes or no. As an example, you all, to amplify student voice, have decided that a student is going to be represented, therefore, there's really no ongoing reason to monitor that, is it green or red? Have we done it? Have we done an orientation? Are we talking to, is it a young lady? Yep, so are we giving her an opportunity to check in quarterly, where the superintendent can hear directly from her on how things are going at the high school? Next, strengthen engagement, engagement satisfaction, this is a rating on a biannual survey, I believe this is your state one?
No, this will be our internal.
Okay, so internal, again, looking at engagement on social media, new app adoption rate, crisis communication response time. For the full implementation of social emotional learning, is it here, it's going to be about a rate increase, rating increase, and so you'll want to get a foundational or baseline, and then we're going to want to monitor both that and ISS, OSS.
Can I, is it okay to ask, you know, maybe I'm not allowed to say this, but I'm not a big fan of that climate, if it's the thing that uses the parent survey and the teacher survey, you know, because it's always adult, 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 adult. I think my question is, is the participation just a, we got this number of people to take it?
In order for a survey, for you to feel that there's some validity to it, we want to make sure that a certain percentage of individuals are actually participating.
Yep.
Otherwise, you get the, the very, very anger, right?
Yep.
You're motivated two ways.
Sure.
And we're not really sure what the-
Okay. So then, I guess, can I ask another question here? So we get, the key performance indicator would simply be the percentage of people in it, parents, other staff, and then the percentage of ISS, OSS?
No, no. So the best is not the climate start.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
The best is a completely different streaking pool.
Yep.
The interim metrics are really the things that you will hear about-
Yep.
-in the board meeting at some point in time. So example is, after we go to GSBA-
Yep.
-some pre-work, we're not reading, read on their behalf, but you will have an opportunity to share and reflect on what happened at GSBA, which is the student board representative, you would say, once she starts, and not June, but once she starts in, you know, August, her reflecting on the training she's receiving is more of the interim metric that helps to give us what the key performance indicator will leave. So example, when you were saying, what's the formative assessment look like? What do the grades look like? Well, a formative assessment helps with a teacher to understand where they will potentially perform on even the map or the star, which helps to inform where they would perform on the milestone. So there are other indicators that help us to get to what would be that key performance indicator. And that E column are the things that you will hear about in all types of presentations that will help you to learn if we're, we are on track or off track with the key performance indicator, which is column C.
Thank you.
One quick question, too, related to the ISS, OSS rate, rating increase. Is it, are you still thinking about the percentage, or is it?
So that, I'm still at five.
Okay.
Reason B, I don't want, just as we said, for a huge jump or a huge decrease of just one to two students could do in our district, five percent, another five percent on top of the five percent that we've had, will help us to really see, is something really being done differently in the building, or are they potentially using their own form of student consequences that's not aligned to the student code of conduct? So that's where, here is, we're identifying what key performance indicator is, but the baseline is very, I still think it needs to be five, based on what I'm thinking about. What I see in this district, we need to stay five, because the culture is what's going to eat that strategy. I love everything. That's just where I am.
May I ask one more question? Given what we were all talking about earlier, about budget and the community and myths and misunderstanding and facts, and, you know, the nice rollout of community meetings and yet not heavily attended, should there be, is that where building and sustaining and engaging culture, strengthening, aligning stakeholder engagement? Am I off the mark to say something involving, I see that engagement rate on social media, so fine, you know, anyone in the community can go check out the Facebook post or Instagram, the new app adoption rate, and the crisis communication response time, is there any other metric that might be important? Like the number of people that completed a feedback form, or the number of people that come to a meeting, or, am I wrong?
I want to hear what McCall has to say about that. I think we answered, yeah, answered those questions a couple of times in the past, and she had some, like, some very savvy thoughts.
If I could control people's ability to get up, out of the car or down the street to a meeting, trust me, I would. What I found to be more of an engagement tool is using social media, and then of course, I have two-way communication questions, but I was leery about putting a metric on how many people actually, because I don't have any control.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so let's pivot to this last one, which is actually one of my favorite ones. There's a lot of research that says students who are engaged in some meaningful activity outside the classroom have a dramatically better experience at school, right? So like, are you an athlete, or do you like theater, right, do you belong to a club or activity? So here, what we're going to do is not only try to increase the opportunities, but also the number of students, right? So just because you have a bunch of activities, and you list, oh, we went from thirty activities to sixty, but it didn't change the children's behavior, which is, I'm part of a step group or a walking club or a juggling club, then that's not going to help anything. Does that make sense? So here, I think there's some good strategy in overlapping those. All right. Next, big bucket, organizational effectiveness. Again, this idea of making flow and steady changes, I will tell you, if you signal that you want suspensions to be reduced by twenty-five percent or any metric, the adult behavior could result in the opposite effect, which is, I'm going to tell Johnny to go home, but I'm not going to call it a suspension.
Right.
Come pick up your kid. Does that make sense? That's not what we want to do. We want to change adult behaviors, create environments and climates that actually change student behavior.
And you know, we know.
Okay, so in this space on organizational, a variance of two percent or lower with budgeting, again, we want to make sure if the funding that we put forward, we're living within our means and not spending the money on the things we said we would, and here, we're going to provide monthly board updates and the production of a budget book.
Where is the two percent measured from, right? Because I know we have to make estimates long before we actually have full information, and so-
So after end of fall, everything is ended for FY24-
Yep.
-and we've closed it, everything out.
Yep.
We can then determine what was that variance for FY24, and then we'll do the same thing on FY25 once it ends. And what, around when would that be? August?
But, so like, if we're saying we're going to, we're budgeting a certain amount of revenue, the budget number that we began the year with on revenue is, you're just never going to hit two percent of that at the beginning of the year, because it's so wildly varying, right? We just don't know. And it, I mean, I know you update it as you go along over the year, and you made tighter and tighter estimates.
Right.
At what point does the need of estimate say, that's what we're going to hold the two percent on? Because if it's the beginning of the year, I think that's unfair to-
Yeah.
Well, not just to us, broom, but to like all of us.
Yes, it is a little unfair, because it does vary based upon-
COVID, I mean, there's like, there's a half a dozen things that can dramatic, I mean, COVID did a super example, but there's a thousand things that adjust and influence.
So when looking at this specific KPI-
Yeah.
-one of the things that, and I'm looking at it as a graph test, every chief in here, as well as every principal, in a modified zero-based budget, said, this is what I need for next year and what I need to do.
I'm a hundred percent to holding a two percent on expenditures, to be clear.
Yeah, that is, so maybe we need to just say, I need to see what you've asked for is really what you needed.
Yep.
Now I asked for the moon, and I didn't expend it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Which is what I saw when going into that modified zero-based budget, and looking at, you know, what was the percentage left on the table in multiple budgets, especially at the-
So, so, yeah, if what you're saying is a two percent on budgeted expenditures-
Mm-hmm.
-I'm there.
Okay.
No question.
You're nervous about the revenue.
Revenues are wacky, right?
Okay, we can stay there.
I think so.
No.
Amanda, you want to make that change while you're right there? Because Amanda's being-
Now, hopefully, we're not going to have a forty percent on budgeted revenue either, I don't think it's measured though. I just think that it should be-
Without the variance?
Each update is important, right? So like, for expenditures, I think September to September is important.
Yep.
Revenue, September was important, but then we'll be here in October, or in November, or December, so-
Those we provide.
Right, right, right. So, listen, we want to measure that, like, we spend a lot of time saying, hearing from the city manager, and the tax assessor, and whether we did a good job. So I am interested in-
Yeah.
Certainly, how far that variance is all, because it helps inform us how we can do next, all of it.
Do everything else, all the next forecast.
I just don't, I agree with Hans, that two percent variance from September to September is unrealistic, it's just not that helpful, but I don't know what is.
Well, maybe I'll say it this way, we, we control every lever of budgeted expenditure. We control none of the levers of budgeted revenue. So that's, it's, that's-
The one there.
Yeah, but we don't know collections, we don't know, yeah, we don't know what's going to happen with any of that, yeah, any of that stuff. But it will help you make tighter predictions based on GASS, so keeping track of it. All right, let's keep moving. The next one, internal and public dashboards. Again, the idea here is to create systems where staff members have more data, and that data drives better decision. And how we'll track that, it said yes or no, are we creating them, the number of increased opportunities for the development of these dashboards, and then the usage of it. So it's not just that I provided it, are people using it, is it beginning to change to inform their decision making.
And then, obviously, this increases the transparency. So some of the conversations that were just, we were having a little bit before the break around transparency, and so having those dashboards available will increase that transparency.
What do we mean by the number of dashboards?
So, at the moment- So at the moment, we don't have any public.
Yeah, zero's not great, but.
But, but we will have milestones dashboards. You could have star dashboards. You could have, oh, at an aggregate type of a dashboard. I wouldn't, not at a K two go there because of the, because of those violations. We have to make sure.
But so when I look at the met, is it, is it good to have a very high number of dashboards? Is it good to have a low number of that? So I guess I don't understand then, what do we, what is the value we're trying to convey with that?
Don't we have none right now?
We have none right now.
Yeah.
As far as external. I think the value of what the school leader or even a teacher has on the data for their students and a dashboard readily available. I mean, right now, the teachers don't have any besides what is in SLDS.
Yeah, I'm, so I'm asking, it's, uh, so like a hundred percent I'm with you on wanting to have dashboards. But I don't wanna have dashboards for the sake of having dashboards. So if what we're saying is we're having an interim metric where the higher we get that number of dashboards, the better that we're doing. At some point, we're not doing a good job. We're just throwing out crap. And so how do we know?
I, I hear you, but I think that's where the balance of usage occurs. So if we've created a dashboard and the signal is no one's using it, right? People are basically quoting with their feet and saying that whatever you just created isn't good. Um, I hear you though. So it's not just the, the act of saying, hey, we built five dashboards, but are, is it really providing what people want?
And so then aren't we already getting that with that next one? Like the number of dashboards isn't really that helpful? It is the use of hits on the dashboards?
So initial metric and then that one kinda falls off, maybe?
Good, what about new dashboards versus number? If you just wanna know what they are as opposed to quantify?
I, I wanna avoid creating busy work making dashboards.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah.
That's, but I, I, I have a second.
I think at the beginning, the beginning metric is.
Going from zero.
Creating it to something.
To something. And that can fall off. It can fall off.
Ah, one more question about ISS OSS. Um, because I know that we get a PBIS date. Um, we had one not too long ago. But is there a way, cause I, you know, I know that pandemic, we were just initiating PBIS and then the pandemic hit and still try, you know, the ramp up to get it back on. I'm just interested in how it's going.
So, yes, to answer your question, yes. PBIS is actually, the DOE is about to take that work and integrate it into MTSS to make a larger, because you remember, I said, MTSS is a multi-tier support around attendance, behavior, and then the C, whether it's your course completion or your curriculum. So they are now about to bring the two together. So the ratings as far as operational distinguished or things of that nature, they're about to change a lot of it, which is one of the reasons why I did not list it because I know it's about.
Okay.
But I think it's very valuable an internal metric, which is why staff hears a lot of that from the, or even you heard it at our last board meeting, to say, are we actually using TBIS with fidelity and what is the perception of staff to do that? Is a part of one of those metrics that staff hears from. But we definitely, I think that would go up in SEL framework. It's just, I don't know enough about what it's going to look like when the DOE is finished to put it in here.
Okay.
But that's where, cause I had it in there, just like I think a lot of times, that box right there could be a lot of different things. But I need to see what the DOE is going to do first. And once I know, then I'll put it in there.
This may be way too much in the weeds. The use slash hits on dashboards, I'm just thinking, you know, the first time I learned that you can get infinite campus readouts and see this number of people were checking infinite campus. So my question about like the hits on the dashboards is fine. You happen to be an uber attentive mom who checks the grade dashboard for whatever it is every day. And so you're gonna have thirty hits and that's one person. So, you know, again, is this too much in the weeds where just the number of hits, if we're looking at the fact that people are going to the dashboard, but hits versus people is, you know, different?
I don't know if we can look at who it is that's logging in.
Okay.
That's a level of granularity that.
Okay.
All right. So the next one is build a net zero early childhood learning center. Again, um, having interim updates is building in progress, meeting project deadlines, deliverables in terms of budget to actual.
Budget to actual.
Budget to actual, yes. I hear you, Lawrence.
Sorry, Sergio.
No, but he, he receives probably an email from me about this, um, that specific objective.
The labor and material costs have just been so difficult to predict, um, in the last couple of years. And then the last one, establish equitable access and within facilities. This is a focus on ADA, uh, and then again, percent increase.
Are we, are, are we in, um, compliance?
An ADA perspective, my guess is, I've not walked your buildings. I've never met a school district that's a hundred percent.
Yeah, I think some of those, especially some of that really old, old elementary schools are just.
Yes.
The size of the hallways, there's stuff that.
Exactly, size of a doorway to, um, so you know, in Beak, at Beacon Hill in the media center, there is that additional room that's inside of there. The width of that doorway, of whether or not it is wide enough for a wheelchair to go in, take, imagine that and go around all of our buildings. Think there was an issue here when I first walked the building around a width. And where you were doing construction at the beginning of the year, you said, no, they have to take this out and rebuild it again because it, it was not ADA compliant. The lift for the stage here, you've seen that in updates from. All of these are the different projects that will help us get to ADA compliance.
It's an honor. And then they change requirements sometimes. Um, okay, let's pivot over to cultivating and retaining high-quality professionals. Um, major, major focus, compensating staff, that annual progress moving from the bottom quartile, uh, annual, uh, comparison to total benefit tax. Um, and then again, because the rankings there, it's a yes or no, are we making progress or not?
So in this case, we're talking about some staff, but not all staff, right?
Now, I, I would say, if it's a strategic plan, you're talking about all staff.
What do you, which metric are you talking about?
The first one, we'll start with, we're compensating staff competitively, need to be defined enough.
So that, that's where I think there's, like, you know, all due respect to everyone in this room, a chief position at Gwinnett is a larger job than a chief position. And it's gonna compensate them. So we're going to be in a lower quartile in terms of staff compensation for cabinet, you know, relative to, you know, systems that are three and a half billion dollar systems, right? Um, and, and I, so I just, I wanna think about how to, we absolutely have to be at or above comparable districts. Easy to be compensated. Um, but that may not be top quartile for some positions.
But I think, I don't think that that, I don't think that that's the case. I think when you go through and you do, when people who do compensation do that, they take all those factors into consideration. So I think when you look at chief position one place or chief position another, they look at all of those factors and they're able to figure out what, they're able to figure out what a fair market analysis or fair market value may be. I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a reason to weed out the word staff or for us to, to make the assumption that a chief position or any position across the district, that because of the size of our district, that they may not move, I think maybe as it's written here, that the goal is to make them competitive.
Competitive, oh, competitive.
Yeah.
Well, so then, I mean, so I, I guess.
And or comparative.
I'm going by the table that we were shown. And by the table that we were shown, Gwinnett and Fulton and APS were on that. And I would say for chief positions, those would not constitute comparative. Those are multi-billion dollar systems, serving a couple hundred thousand children. And so if that's what we're saying, is that we're gonna adjust the tables to only show comparative metro districts. So for us, it would be Marietta, basically, um, um, on, on that level, then I'm, then I'm good. We don't need to change.
Cause a lot of our feedback that we have gotten here recently. They were just comparing, they were just going by the chart.
Yeah.
Comparing us against everybody. They weren't.
So you not want to do comparative me- metro districts? Or do you want to just do like-sized metro districts?
Well, so.
Comparative, we could say in top quartile of comparative like-sized metro districts.
No, because I think for teachers, it's all districts, right? So I, it is, it is, I think specifically when we start talking about executive positions, you're starting to talk about what is the scope and size that you're covering. And so if, I think the word comparative is fine.
Okay.
So long as we all know, we use different comparisons when we're talking about teachers versus staff.
The level of mobility for a teacher is much greater, much easier to leave here to go to Gwinnett.
Yep.
Right? To be a teacher. The chief academic officer role there may open up every three to five years.
Yes.
However, I would also, it's a double-edged sword. If you've hired an incredible CAO or reading person and you're starting to see unbelievable results because this individual's so high quality, do we really want them to leave here and go to Atlanta to make fifty thousand dollars more? That's a question you all need to grapple with, right? But to your point, can we find a way to thread that needle where, cause you're right. I ran a large district. It's very complicated and hard. But I'll tell you, some of the smaller systems, these people will tell you, they can't turn around and delegate it to fifty people. There is no one behind them, right? So I, I hear you, but at the same time, I think there's a bit of a nuance there.
I, I, I wanna reframe that whole conversation. I think, talk about compensation for people making less than a hundred thousand dollars. It's a lot, it's a lot more powerful and important.
Yes.
And the livability. And if you're making one-twenty, one-forty, two-hundred plus, working in a school district, I don't care where your school district are, are you underpaid? Yeah, you actually probably are and you need to be paid more. There's something about, uh, we're starting off at fifty-four and the cheapest house within five miles is eight hundred thousand dollars. Those numbers are made up. Um, and, and so I'm fine with compensating staff competitively, but I think that we need to be humane in the way that we talk about it. And that's what I'm talking about. I don't actually think anyone's job is harder or easier or whatever. They're all damn hard jobs. This is very different to be a director of communications in Gwinnett with, what did you tell me? Like seventeen people and McCall I think turned around with like two people she can consult? Like, yeah, they've got a hundred thousand kids and we've got.
The nice thing is with this, y'all have to make this decision every year. Cause you're, so yes, this is something we're studying. Yes, this is something we'll bring back. But if we bring back something unreasonable, then your decision is that's not reasonable.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? I do like though, the idea of, of maybe, um, looking at this teacher component more broadly. Cause you are in competition with all.
That's where, I mean, at the end of the day, can we recruit the top tier talent as one institution based upon the competition? And that becomes, like in that case, we'd better be at the absolute top of the table easy to be other districts to get teachers in.
But if I can add to this, the one thing I don't see in here is the retaining point. So I know we've been looking at vacancy and I so appreciate that. But am I missing something with, this is what we're doing to try to get you here? And you're talking a lot about the competitive salary. Where are we looking at keeping teachers?
Is that two and three or are two and four?
Um, where, I don't see it.
Professional development pathways, so.
Yeah, that, that's just something we're offering. What I wanna know is what metric we're using to say that ninety-eight percent of our teachers from last year stayed this year.
So it's the third bucket in the middle, retention of staff zero to three years, percent increase, interim data.
But that's just perception data.
That's the interim data though, the absolute, the one that we're gonna track track is what is the actual retention of staff zero to three years? Is it growing?
Thank you.
Right, good, good discussion and, and I think Amanda, are you typing guys there?
I also, I also think just for the record, I think we as a leadership team, as a board, need to be first in setting the tone that because we are giving our teachers and our frontline staff a raise or advocating for them, it doesn't mean that administrators and the leaders don't deserve that raise or that it's not an us versus them or it's not in, in either, it's not an either or thing. We're not pulling money from here to go there. It doesn't work that way. Um, and I think we have to be the ones that say that. It can't be that because, you know, we're gonna give, you know, because we're gonna give the leaders who are working behind the scenes, the compensation they deserve in order to be competitive. They can get out of the bottom quartile that because of that, we're somehow taking something away from the teachers who also deserve a raise. We've worked equally as hard to give them that. I also think sometime, some portion of this, I, it, I, it stings me a little bit because so many of the leaders on this team are women of color who are notoriously underpaid for the work they do. They work hard to get in these leadership positions and are notoriously underpaid. And I think that we should equally work hard to make sure that these, these women get what they deserve. Um, so if we have to do a comparison to here or there, if we have to look out of state, if we have to look to another region, then we should do that thing. Um, and it should not be that where, it should not be an us versus them or the administrator versus a teacher sort of thing. These are, these are folks who are directly impacting the outcome of our students and we should stop nitpicking their jobs and make it work for everybody. Otherwise, I think we're sending the wrong message here.
But I, I agree. But I also think that we have to own what we know. And I would argue, as a public school teacher for my entire almost adult life, school districts can do a much better job demonstrating why. I think y'all do a phenomenal job, okay? It, but can we do a better job of demonstrating why these are so necessary versus just explaining that we're gonna offer a comparative pay? I also think, cause I looked at it to see like where would I fall? I know what metro school districts are doing, but we also know that we're living in a new world. So we may need to do things differently. And so when I look and I see how long I've been teaching, where I would fall on the salary scale, but I know that's what all metro districts do and that's why we're doing comparative. So I wholeheartedly agree with what you're saying. But I also think if we know that people want something, what can we do? And I think you talked about earlier, like the two extremes and.
Sure, I, I, I apologize Tracy, I just, I did not follow that. What, I, what exactly?
I think what I'm saying is someone can walk in a classroom, you know what a teacher does, you know what a custodian does, you know what a bus driver does, you know what it looks like when the bus driver isn't driving the bus. You know when you're not getting served lunch. You know when your social studies teacher isn't there. You know if the principal isn't in the building.
Yep.
I think the, the standard perception is we have these positions and people just don't understand what are the student outcomes?
I don't know. I'm an average parent. I'm not watching school board meetings. I have no idea. I hear you.
Yeah.
And that is a problem everywhere, right? I mean, I remember in Fulton at the time, they did an article about all the employees who made a hundred thousand dollars, right? And so all these parents were in uproar. Then I do an analysis. Our temp office administrators were making less. And the, the, the board at the time said, we never wanna be the highest paid, um, but we also don't wanna be in the bottom quartile. So it's a balancing act.
A balance, I think.
I, I do wanna go back to what Carmen was saying. I do think that we as a board owe a clear statement to the community that, that the administration did not ask for cabinet raises. We as a board asked to have those cabinet raises. That was us, that was our decision. We told the administration to come back to us with that. So it's not, it's not like Dr. Broom decided to give everyone a raise and this is on her, right? Like that, that was our policy that we unanimously brought forward and requested. And I think that we need to be that clear with the community. Stop going after the administration about this. This is us. If you have a question, talk to us.
And just as a person who does this for a living, the cabinet members that you have behind you are incredibly diverse, very talented, predominantly females. That's incredibly rare, to be honest with you. Just did a meeting in Gwinnett, um, I would argue it's a completely different story in a lot of the districts in Savannah and some other places. So applaud your efforts to ensure that the teams are talented and doing good work. And at the end of the day. And at the end of the day, are they getting great results? These reading and math scores keep going up, which I hope they do and I think they will, given your track record, then I think all of this is justified. That's how you justify, we're getting better, even better. So, alright, let's keep moving. Um, the P D investment, again, we're, we want to invest in people, not just programs and creating these pathways will allow people to follow leadership roles or get better at their jobs. They want to stay, you're investing in me as a person, I then say, I'm invested in cities. Um, develop comprehensive mentorship programs, the retention of staff incredibly important, yes. Um, sometimes we just get people that aren't a good fit, they're not supporting and, 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 um, working with our staff. Important to measure it, but we have to give our principals the opportunity to let some staff go, if it's not a good fit, it happens. Uh, but we do want to continue to work on that. Expand universal, uh, university and like minded organization partnerships, you guys have already begun to do some of that. U V A's great, I love them, uh, communities and schools, I saw your thing outside, huge supporter of them as well. Uh, we want to make sure we find these great people and, and, and invest in them. This para earning teacher certification is so important. Um, again, most of the people, in my experience, who are paraprofessionals working with us, tend to be moms, sometimes single parents. Hard to strive to go back to school, want to, great at what their jobs are, but, um, helping them and supporting them is important. Alright, let's jump into the last.
May I ask one question about the endorsement? Because when teachers get endorsements, it's usually on their own time. Um, so is there any incentive for a teacher to get, for example, gifted endorsed or E S O L endorsed?
Well, typically it's payment. So if you, when I had, when I got my leadership endorsement.
Yeah, leadership, but not gifted.
Gifted, I remember, gifted endorsement.
Yes.
I, the district paid for me to get my gift, I did not have to pay.
Okay.
Get my gift. There are other systems that that's not the case.
So we pay for the teachers to get endorsed, okay?
And in addition, they receive a stipend for things that, um, are high need, like we really do need gifted certification because of the model changing.
Okay.
E S O L, M T S S.
You put an incentive.
We do.
Thank you.
Good clarification.
Alright, the most important. You said something that really resonated with me on the K P I and how we measure the top thing. And you said they never wanted to be first, but they wanted to make sure they're compensated. That probably speaks better, my thinking, as a board member, voting member.
Intap quartile.
When it comes to teachers and staff, and we have an opening at the middle school, I want everyone in the Atlanta Metro District to say, I can make a crap ton of money if I left my school and came to Decatur and started teaching. And I want to be first there, I know that it's slog, get there. I'm gonna be honest, when it comes to senior level stuff, I think that that stuff can start low, but you can raise up and we should make my, so. There, those areas, these comparable districts, for teachers, I, I want to, I would, I think the majority of this board would agree with me. It's like, no, I want, I want every best teacher of the year to be like, I finally got some awards, let's see if Decatur will take me.
Great signal, I love it, love it. Alright, so let's move to the most important piece, which I like your idea of flip flopping this, I think that's, that's smart. Um, deliver high quality standard based instruction. Um, again, this is, these are the interim metrics, so we can get a sense of are we tracking in the right direction? And here it's gonna be quite simply, are we making the improvements that we need to make, um, on those important metrics? And I know that a big part of that is also closing the gap. Uh, the team has mentioned that several, several times during our pre sessions. Provide meaningful and relevant assessments using results. Uh, this is pretty straightforward, any questions on the top two?
A clarification, would the district's standards based assessment be like STAR or MAP? Or is that like the math test that everyone's used?
Internal, so that's where the, I think, uh, earlier we were talking about performance assessment, classroom assessment. We're building that.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, embed career college life preparedness in diverse and culturally relevant ways. Uh, again, are we looking at signals along the way, are kid, are we creating an environment where kids want to be here first?
Yes, that's what I said, a lot of what you were saying were in the K P I's, it's, we have had to get to this point.
Pathway enrollment, completion, A P I, V D E, again, this is important. We don't want to lose our upper kids. Like if, if a parent says, I don't have, I don't see a pathway here, I'm gonna go to a private school if I can, we don't want to see that. We want to make sure we're meeting everybody's needs.
Are we counting honors as accelerated enrollment?
Honors is not accelerated, that, honors is, it's a little different.
Got it, I just, in case we needed to track it, but that's.
Yeah, but, uh, we will know it.
Yeah.
But it's not in that.
It's not that, yeah, I got you.
What's E O P A?
The pathway assessment.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
Which is also important, we've got kids who in least group, uh, Microsoft certified and, and maybe do something in that space. Um, alright, and last one, again, um, important, close the achievement gap for our students. And here we're going, we're going to look at and identify, you know, uh, math, three, five, eight and E O Cs. Uh, and, and, uh, the interim metrics are to the right.
Just another, then for the high school students.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a reason why we don't want to be very specific about subgroup data? You know exactly what we want to be looking at here.
What do you mean? By, by race?
Well, by, I think by free and reduced lunch, um, economic hardship.
Certainly, some pieces come out and if you're talking about C C R P I, we were very specific in content mastery subgroup data because what the state gives us is the part we will report. For economically disadvantaged, that sits in readiness, that does not sit in content mastery. So I just need to make sure that they will give us what we need. That's why we listed high enough to say subgroup, because that could also include your students with disabilities as well.
Yes.
So I don't, I didn't want to just each and every, just because I need to make sure they're, that's what they're giving us.
Um, I don't see the word subgroup on the.
Uh, under content mastery.
I, I, I think this is my final question, C C R P I includes graduation rate, right?
Yes. Not a called out A P I.
Yeah.
Our, our district is extremely high graduation rate. If you not graduating maybe two to three word children, it's not, that's, that's not going to push us. What's going to push us is that content mastery and that subgroup data. And that C C R P I high school readiness, that's going to push us, cause that's our growth opportunity, not your average.
Historically, we have had a tendency to blur into averages, things of that sort, that's where.
Sure.
And that's why we pulled that out.
Yep.
Alright? Yes, yes. So, uh, that concludes. That concludes, and you can adjourn our, um.
Alright.
Open meeting portion.
Yeah, that'll turn the open portion of our meeting, we'll, we'll, uh, move to.
Executive session.
Executive session.